The July tenth meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. First order of business, can we have someone lead us in the pledge, Mr. Duke? Would you be the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Paul. Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Apples, Director Dugan, Director Honchar, Director Mendoza, Director O'Brien, Director Richardson.
Is not able to be here tonight.
Director Shell, and then Director Zalewski.
She's not able to be here.
And Director Schwan.
Here. There is a portion of our meeting where we have the public commenting on any items that are on the agenda tonight. Does anyone in the audience wish to comment on an agenda item? If not, we'll move on. I understand we have a special presentation.
That's correct. One of the things, I want to thank our faculty members who are here tonight. They're all department heads and they're both at the secondary and the elementary level. I asked the department heads, Mr. Mantich, to come and talk a little bit about how they work together to move our curriculum forward, on budgetary issues, mentoring of new teachers, and so forth. So I'd like to throw it over to Mr. Mantich and let him talk about it.
Thank you. Dr. President, before I get involved in department heads, a kind of a little briefing about the assessment data we just set forth, can you go over it a little bit more quickly?
Well, let's go over what the department heads had and then, you know, they can go and then we can hit the assessment data as well.
All right. So the department heads, they have contractual duties and obligations according to their collective bargaining agreement and their roles and responsibilities at this point are conducting department meetings. And we do plan at least one department meeting every month that they do hold. Assistant administration is planning implementation in-service programs, making recommendations for curriculum change, making recommendations, assisting in the evaluation of textbooks, maintaining the accurate inventory of equipment and instruction materials, coordinating and ordering and distributing of instructional supplies, being able to meet with colleagues and administrators when needed, chairing curriculum development meetings, participating in the interview process of new teacher candidates when they're requested, and other reasonable duties that are consistent with the responsibilities that may be required. And when I looked over the CBA contractual language, they're kind of titled as curriculum coordinators, but to me that seems like it's like an outtake. They didn't name them, more of a department chairperson and teacher leaders in our school. During my work with the department, department heads and department chairperson, they perform nervous tasks that coincide with their contractual duties as I previously mentioned. They've worked with me in development of curriculum for the courses in their departments. They've assisted in course development, content alignment to standards, anchors and eligible content, and review of data or recommendations for changes and interventions that permit us to move forward as a department and as a district. These plans for interventions will then be included in their minutes and they were always placed in my mailbox. Other things they've done with me is they were instrumental in facilitating the selection of math programs, both at the elementary school and the junior, senior high school. In the past year, we were interested in writing better lesson plans and behavioral objectives. The department chairpersons assisted me in the in-service on writing good behavioral objectives that were performed based on, that were performance-based and measurable. They facilitated meetings with the departments with the outcomes we discussed and produced the evidence of good lesson plans and well-written, perform-based objectives. We continue to follow up this in-service with a lesson plan rubric to provide continuous feedback to teachers on a week-to-week basis. Many department chairs were instrumental in the development of this rubric as well. The department chairs were asked to facilitate data meetings with their departments. They were asked to review the data prior to their meetings with their colleagues, copy the data relevant to their particular departments, and distribute the information to the members for review and discussion. The department chairpersons were also provided a series of guided questions that they were working through to help to facilitate their discussions. At the end of these discussions, the department heads waited to develop goals for the year and create a plan for the attainment of these goals. During this process, department chairpersons took it upon themselves to have any departmental meetings in order to get support from other, excuse me, to get support for some of the goals that were developed. For an example, the English and Social Studies Department decided they were going to get together because they were both working to help us students perform better in writing text-dependent analysis-type questions. At department head meetings, we discussed curriculum resource cycle. Department heads came together and decided they would prefer that the curriculum material cycle would not necessarily be a rotational, but a collaborative effort decided year by year based on the most pressing needs of our district. This collaboration allowed for the school's immediate needs to be addressed and not worry about whose turn it was in the cycle. Also, at this particular meeting, we discussed the issues of our current student culture, about the importance of how well, excuse me, the culture of the importance of doing well on our state assessments. There was a feeling that there was a growing concern that students did not feel they had to perform well, and we needed to find ways to turn that thinking around and ways to implement these kind of ideas in their classrooms. Department heads also hold meetings to discuss the upcoming PSSA and Keystone exam schedules, and we were asked for their input and their recommendations. Also at these meetings, the department heads discussed the idea of a couple, like the idea of a couple of faculty members that we eventually called the Keystone Cramp. At these meetings, we discussed how the best way to utilize a student's time who were not taking the PSSA, such as our upperclassmen. We created a framework for these students to get remediation in Algebra I, Biology and ELA to prepare for the Keystone exams, and also for the students taking the AP courses to receive additional instruction in preparation for their AP exams. During subsequent department meetings, the department heads facilitated the process of scheduling of all the students into rooms based on their individual needs, prepared activities for these sessions, searched and collected materials to support these sessions. And this was a very large undertaking for the department heads and the members in planning and implementing this venture, and we were very pleased with the structure and the outcome. After these sessions, I received feedback from faculty members that will allow us to review last year's procedures in an effort to improve the process for this year. This would not have been possible without the cooperation and hard work of the department heads and the members of their department. The idea was introduced by the faculty members on or around December first, and they had it turned around and implemented by April third. Everybody worked very hard, and everybody carried their own weight in their departments and responsibilities towards this effort. Many other informal meetings have taken place between myself and the individual department heads as it related to curriculum, curriculum resources, student data, department meetings as they arise. There are needs and concerns that are particular to specific departments that do not require an entire group of department heads to discuss. These may include items that I would like to, items that I would like to place on their agendas for the department meetings that are concerned of a particular relevance. For example, we had a time where we had a teacher went to a seminar on text-dependent analysis, and we asked the, Mr. Department Chairperson, if they would mind putting her on the department agenda so she can give a small presentation because text-dependent analysis were one of our concerns and things of that nature. Let's see. Others would be discussed specifically curriculum concerns from faculty that approached me about revisions such as middle school reading and English scope and sequences, and a desire to review and eliminate overlapping content. Further examples would be to discuss materials needed for the departments and get a department wish list for resources. Lastly, when we wanted to find volunteers to attend a series of mathematics workshops with other teachers in the area, especially down at South Fayette, we sent these ideas to improve mathematics to the department chair, and we brought that out through department meetings. Again, these types of ideas were added to the agendas of the particular departments and then reported back to me with their outcomes. Department heads provide a valuable service to our educational organization and our objectives. They have a place in the leadership structure and help provide the input and expertise to help implement our objectives as we aim to improve our student achievement. Sometimes I don't think I can thank them enough for what they do, but I try every time I ask them to do more. They never once told me no. When asked, do we have a formal evaluation procedure, and the CBA specifically doesn't have one, but my experience worked with them, they have fully fulfilled their roles according to the CBA duties and responsibilities as they apply to our current administrative structure. Excuse me. The administrative team would make sure of this if that was not the case. However, in my experience working with these professionals, they met or exceeded my expectations, and I'm grateful for the constant open line of communications we have with them, and it makes both of our roles a lot easier. So as far as I'm concerned, thank you, and that would conclude my court on the department heads.
And I asked the department heads to introduce themselves. I don't know if all board members know of all the faculty representation here, if they're kind of in one particular school or another. So why don't we start, Mr. Cozy?
Mike Cozy, High School Math.
Hi, Adrian Monahan, Elementary English Language Arts.
Josh McCarroll, Craft and Health and Physical Education. Russ Peterson, and I share the position with...
Diane Christ.
And we do the art and music for the elementary.
Diane, you're Carnegie primarily.
I'm Carnegie and Crafton.
I'm Marlin Vianos. I'm High School Visual Arts and Music.
Wendy Steiner, High School English, Library and Foreign Language, or Begg's Social Studies at the High School.
Brian Hurwitz, Elementary Special Education, E. I'm at Carnegie.
Sure. As I say, does anybody or does any board member have any questions, or does any of the faculty members want to talk a bit about what you do and how you support not only the curriculum and the students, but some of the roles you serve as leaders in the department, interdepartmental meetings, working with youngs, student teachers, or first-year temporary professional employees as mentors? Is some of those things that come to the fore?
In Special Education, Elementary, luckily we haven't had a turnover in the past couple of years, this is our eleventh year coming in. So getting everyone established with the curriculum, because before I started, we kind of did everything separately. And then when I got back on board, both at Carnegie and Crafton, we'd both share the same interventions. So when we have kids switch back and forth through school, it's not a complete shock. You know, they get right back on pace for what they work for. And just making sure that, you know, if we have great ideas we're sharing between the two schools, and I'm kind of like the point person between that for elementary special education.
Let's see, one thing that's important to know is that we don't have any supervisory responsibilities. So I've been in this position over ten years, and the change in it has been dramatic. And one of the things that has helped is that we now we do have somebody that we can go to, particularly with curriculum, because in the past, we'd get this director to write curriculum, but I couldn't make somebody in my department write that curriculum or not. It fell on me. But now that we have Mr. Mantich kind of doing the overview, we can kind of focus where does our piece fit into that, and it is now directed. You know, so that I think has made, over the years, that has made that significantly smoother of a process. He mentioned too about the textbooks, which was a big thing. The old days was, five years, whether you needed a book or not. So all of us at the high school, you know, I can't speak to the elementary, but at the high school, we're like, wait a minute, we have some books that before he was in there from like the 1970s. Maybe they should get there before those of us that are... So some of those things, like I said, now that we have a core team together of department chairs, we definitely see some of those things, those programs, getting jumped by easier.
Wendy? I agree, and I think that it makes the transfer of information a lot smoother too, as far as coming from the faculty, going to your administration team, because we're kind of the sounding board, or they'll come to us first if there's a concern or a question, and then it's one person that the administrators need to meet with. If it's a curriculum concern, then I go in and I speak with Mr. Mantich, or maybe Mr. Lockburn says, you know, can you stop in? I have a question about the class size, and I take it back to the meeting. So it streamlines, streamlines the flow of information. You don't have 50 emails going, even for ordering supplies, for example. All of the department members send them to us, and we send one list to Kathy, instead of her getting all of these emails and people's orders. And then if there was a problem that she, we'd contact me and say, hey, I don't have so-and-so's order, can you check and see if you got it? Then I would say, yep, here, forward it forward. So again, it just eliminates kind of like, you know, too many hands, I think, in the pot of information.
And even though Diane and I split a position, we're not both getting paid full, but we're also splitting the salary. And some of the things we did have done is with Marlin is, in the last couple of years we've run the Arts Education Collaborative, which I think most people here are aware of. That took about, that was a seven-year process, and when Dr. Piper came on board very well, we got them to come in and facilitate that, with also with the support of Mr. Mantich. We did our arts show as part of that, which took about half a year to plan down at the Carnegie, which was also something Dr. Piper indicated the year before. He was looking for some more community outreach. And conversations with Josh at the elementary, we pushed ourselves to the five-day rotation. And if you don't know, the catalyst for that would be is that students that had, say, a special class on Friday might get thirty, thirty-five percent less classes during the course of the year than students that had it on a Wednesday. Now they all get the same amount of classes. So, and we talked with all the specials, but it went to Josh first. And then, of course, we talked with Marlin at the high school, because we also are functioning kind of K through 12, not just at the elementary, in what goes on with the art and music program.
Yeah, that communication, well, because of course even the curriculum, we were focused on working K through 12, so I think the communication, even with the three of us meeting, I'm meeting with the high school department chairs, but we're even meeting, you know, just within our department to talk about those issues as well.
Phys Ed's a little bit different animal in that, like Russ and Diane, from the elementary special perspective, are at both buildings to some degree. My counterpart, Susan Brosman, at Carnegie, three years back, we kind of really took a grassroots approach and developed a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade elementary health curriculum, which hadn't been in place to that point. The Phys Ed curriculum was written K to 12, eight, nine years back, there really wasn't an elementary health perspective. What we had done is we aligned our fourth grade health with some of the basic needs that the fourth grade sciences are using with programs like Study Island. So it's kind of a piggyback off of what the fourth grade science teachers are doing in both elementary schools and developing son of the life processes, digestion system, skeletal system, that they're learning, even with an animal approach in fourth grade science, but the human anatomy approach to fourth grade health. Fifth grade, we tied in a little bit what the fifth grade sciences are doing. The sixth grade approach to health, we took more of a kind of open forum. The sixth grade health curriculum is kind of drug and alcohol awareness. It piggybacks a little bit off of the DARE programs that are brought into the school. But in addition, it is more of the affective domain, kind of the self-awareness of the kids and peer pressures and things like that, because they're the oldest at the elementary, but they're soon to become the youngest at the middle school, high school level. So we talk a little bit about some of the pressures that they'll feel, plus they're at that kind of awkward age where they maybe don't like the very formal setting to ask a question, because maybe they don't know something. Both Susan and I have kind of done anonymous question and answer box, that way if a student doesn't want to raise their hand and their peers and feel embarrassed because they don't necessarily know what this drug is or what this term is or something like that, they can ask it from an anonymous approach, and both she and I respectively will answer it to the class. Now I know with this past years, students at Carnegie, Ms. Brosman had done an all-boys health and an all-girls health. I kept mine just classroom-specific as far as that goes. From a budgetary standpoint, it's building-specific. Ms. Brosman will use the budget kind of for what she needs, more terminal items, things that get lost or kicked balls, things that get worn and torn and replaced. Same for me. From a health, we don't tie much into health. What we do is we take advantage of a lot of online free resources, so like Newsy LA and other programs where they are pertinent to the situation, whether it be weather-related emergencies for fifth grade and things like that. We have both done the Kids of Steel race for the last three or four years, both buildings. We have also been conducting the hoops and the jump rope for HART for the last several years and having the program come in and present to the students, as well as a few years back, we had the opportunity to have a jump rope, competitive jump rope team come in and put on assembly for Crafton Elementary. Ms. Brosman and I just kind of work hand in hand. We share the same assessment that one of us uses, whether it's created through fourth, fifth, or sixth grade. We kind of just kind of go back and forth. It's a very informal, when you're only working with one other person in the department, it's a little bit easier and you don't have a whole lot of cooks boiling the stew, so to speak.
Yep. So I've been in the ELA elementary position for the past two years. I kind of came in the middle of when we were rewriting and revising the ELA curriculum to align with the PA Core standards as we were transitioning from the Pennsylvania State Standards. And a big part of that was meeting with grade-level teams and considering the resources that we have and how the resources that we have can be put together to meet the needs of the students as the standards became a little bit more rigorous. The HART curriculum that we use at the elementary school, we've had for about fifteen years. I think the 2002, 2003 school year was the first year we had it. And from my perspective, a lot of the stories and resources within HART are still valuable, but it wasn't something that we could use from beginning to end, like front to back anymore. We really had to kind of rearrange where we put those stories and resources within the curriculum and then consider other resources, like National Geographics and Storyworks magazines and science readers, to make sure the students were getting the level of rigor that was required by the PA Core standards. So that happened, the revision finished up during the, I guess it would be the 2015, 2016 school year, and then this past school year. We spent a lot of time in in-service, working on the text-dependent analysis questions. That was a big change to the, in the new PSSA, where students, instead of just writing and being required to pull some information from the text in the new form of the PSSA, or as it's changed a bit, there's a really big focus on the analysis part. So we've worked on professional development for that within the district, and we've also been considering our writing and English and grammar resources, because before the PSSA changed to what it is now, there wasn't really a big focus on English and grammar, and that was something that I think as we were all pressed for time and our classrooms kind of got pushed aside, and now it's actually one of the biggest percentage of what the students are supported on, the English grammar and writing. So we really needed to consider which resources we have in the elementary and what we're using to make sure we meet their needs so that they're performing well for testing. And I think that's what will continue in the upcoming school year. I think we're at a point where we need to think about if we want to branch out and consider what other programs may be out there, or if we want to continue doing what we're doing, maybe think about making common assessments, because as we're pulling, pulling resources from different areas, there's a risk that we're going to miss something, or there could be some gaps or overlaps, and we want to make sure all of the students in both buildings are required to learn the same information and are performing, you know, at the level that we would like them to perform. And one way to do that would be to create a common assessment, like quarterly or at the end of each module, so that they're all held to the same standard. So I think that's like a consideration for the coming school year, if, you know, how we want to spend our time, if we want to review other like, maybe programs like the Envisions Math, I know that we moved to, that maybe was more encompassing of everything, or if we want to stick with what we have, but make sure we're creating that common assessment for everyone.
In high school math, much of our focus has been on the testing, some of it for PSSA and of course the PSE and HART for one. So with the schedule changes from a year ago, making sure those teachers are supported, the curriculum, the materials in those classes have also been changed in the last year, making sure that everybody's, has everything they need, making sure the program of studies in terms of the sequels, of course, this has been a big discussion with our department in the past year and will continue to be. And of course, those review sessions that Mr. Mantich had described in great detail were a huge undertaking with the department. So those are probably the three biggest focuses of our work. Does anybody have any questions or things they want to discuss from department heads and Mr. Mantich?
I have a question for, I guess, for Dr. Ed. For the Health and Physical, for Health and PEE, are we aligning with the state standards or are we just, as you mentioned, just kind of piggybacking with science and doing what you think?
Well, they are now. The state standards for Health and Phys Ed are, there's a mastery level, and it's third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, eleventh grade. So there's some gray area. There is some ambiguity in that in sixth grade, they need to master these things. It's sixth grade, I'm giving them a, an overview or an introduction to a lot of like drugs and alcohol, like I said, peer pressure, media influence. Mr. Hope and I attended three years back a conference in Monroeville that described how we, how commercials, advertisements in magazines and things like that are specifically geared towards the pre-teen and the teen demographic for tobacco and alcohol use. And the kids don't see that. And then when you pull up a Super Bowl ad, or you pull up something like that, you can explain why this particular figure is facing this way and that way, and they get that. Now that, the state standards for HPE and safety are very broad. So they are aligned, but there's not a definitive, by the end of sixth grade, they need to acquire this. Truly, they are in the six, seven, eight window, so I'm kind of just whetting their appetite, whereas when they come to the middle school and they have a more concise seventh and eighth grade health curriculum, they should then, at that point, have mastery by the eighth grade, or the, by the end of year eight on the HPE state standards.
Any other question? One quick comment. It's great to hear from all of you, and I think most of the board feels like we're pretty separated from what happens in the classroom day-to-day. The administration obviously is much closer, but you all collectively see things firsthand and your peers are communicating. So that feedback is invaluable. So I know we're not changing a whole lot of ideas tonight, but the idea that you come with the board and you have a conversation with the administration and the board, I think is really healthy. So the advice you've come back a lot, we think you bring feedback a lot, kind of through Dr. Piper, but the more we can understand about what you're seeing and what you're wanting to do and your struggles and your successes and that ebb and flow, the more we can hear that and sense it better. So please bring that often.
I remember when this system that we have going now, department heads, did not exist. And it is so much better now. And two, as you tried to point about communication, the reason why it's better is because you all are communicating, and my hope in the future, we will communicate more with the board, the board, the complete board, so we know as a board what it is your vision is, where you're going, and how we can be supportive, what our vision is, we can hear about that. But I do remember, because I've been on board for a year, when it wasn't this. And so, thank you for making it this and for continuing to evolve as opportunities happen. And so, you know, for some of you board members who don't remember what it was like before, it wasn't like a four.
One last question. Do you all get together as a group and bounce ideas or problems or challenge each other with issues and...
With that building. They, they used that to make it between like mathematics, but we don't do it just for people.
Should we?
Yeah.
Probably.
Absolutely. Because I think they've managed it.
Dr. Piper, this trouble means that I often buy pizza for all these guys and get together.
So my question would be...
What am I changing?
Could something be more informal? Does it have to be this setting?
It can be very, it should be more informal.
You know, like, it's a little...
We can always, you know, two years ago, we had an opportunity to have faculty members come up and work with board in the morning session over at Parkway CTC, and I think if it's interesting both sides, we can arrange something like that again. In the upcoming year for professional development schedule for the next three, we did build in opportunities for interdisciplinary and interbuilding team meetings to focus on things like common assessments and like sub-scoping sequence, designing interventions, interspace interventions for kids for whom the diagnostic assessments, benchmark assessment show needs a little bit extra support.
And I know the board members talked about getting the different divisions and different physical divisions together, and more. And so, in terms of getting together with the board, if the time is better spent getting you all together as a cohesive district-wide team, I think that time is better spent and you can draw us in on a little bit, because I know for years, as the board has changed, the message that has consistently remained, and even with the faculty as well, is how do we get a district-wide team together? Because it's really difficult to evolve, it's absolutely, and how is it that we can get there? Because, you know, it seems like everybody wants to get there, but just kind of have a lot of the time, come up with a plan, get there. I think this is, I'm like, this is the year that is going to happen somehow magically, sort of that, and other board members can agree or disagree with me, like, to get all of our faculty and staff together and district-wide team. with me, to get all, all of our faculty to sat together and district-wide team.
Well, I mean, I think if I, if I, sure Diane and Ross field, from a specials perspective, I think a lot during the professional developments over the last couple of years, that's kind of when, like I said, Susan and I maybe sidebar. Yeah, we've had opportunities set aside specifically for us, but then there's been times where maybe a particular topic doesn't entirely meet all the needs of that particular special, and that's a good opportunity Susan and I have kind of sidebarred and got caught up where Carnegie is, where Crafton is, and tried to get us back on track. So I mean, we do it, and I think that's a great point. I think the more informal nature to it probably produces more, I think it's just more freewheeling and just kind of come up with more ideas and, and you speak more freely.
At the high school too, I can let you know, there are times where we just have the department heads together, and just to give you an example of how we have problem solved issues in the past, there was a time where we were submitting for textbooks and having us all sit around, and of course, we all had our wish list, but then just listening to the other departments talk, you know, there were some, somebody needed books, I think it was the business department. And I remember Mike, Mike had a list of books that he needed for math, and he's like, well, you know what, I'll, I'll table this for a year. The rest of us were like, okay, we can, we'll make do one more year with this, so that business could get the books. So while we do have the interest of our department, of course, at heart, we are willing to work together, or even for scheduling, we sit together and we say, you know, some of us in the upper, that teach the upper grades will say, you know what, the kids can never take a level five Spanish because it always conflicts with this. Is there any way we can look at the schedule? And we provide suggestions that, can you run this class period three instead of period one, because AP Bio is always period one, and then the kids can't get in? So there's a lot of those types of discussions at the high school, and those are some of the problems, you know, that we're willing to solve. So even getting, I think having that conversation with the board too, where you can say, listen, we're struggling with this, you know, what, what can you guys, you know, can you do something? And we've had everything from postating ideas we talk about and, you know, brainstorming, so we're definitely willing to open those lines of communication.
I would like to say too, and not something we didn't answer to tonight or this week, but like, just kind of in your head, did these make sense to you, or are there better ways to break apart departments? Like, are, are, is this as effective as it could be for you guys? Or maybe that, maybe that means, you know, A-12, or whatever, but I think that's something we're all interested in, since we are so renewed, like, is this working as well as it could for you guys?
Any other board comments, questions?
Josh brought up the drug issues specifically, but I guess all of you would be in tune and all of our teachers would be in tune. If you see a kid coming in high, you have those responsibilities to do. I assume that you're seeing more of this, or not?
I wouldn't say more, no, I think we've seen it for sure. I think through training, we maybe are more aware of what to look at. I don't know that the problem is, is bigger within our student body, but I think the teachers are better trained to look for signs of possible use, yeah.
Any other comments from the folks, suggestions, ideas, gates for our next pizza meeting?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you guys for coming. Any other word?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for taking over the beach, and I got curved into that one, I don't have to refresh it a lot of weeks ago. Why me?
Okay, so the members of the board should receive their proficiency rates based on the raw data file we received last week. We should receive our official summary report sometime late September, early October, where we can see how we compare to the state averages in regards to our specific demographic subgroups that we have here. As I looked over the data, as an overview of the data appears as a district, we are, we're trending upward, which is a great sign. Okay, our, our proficiency rates are going up. We've had district-wide increases in ELA from grades four through eight, we've had increases in mathematics from grades five through eight. We've seen pockets that we need to monitor in some areas, ELA in grades three and four, at the elementary level, in, in grade three, and those are in the Crafton Elementary School, math and science in grade four in Carnegie, and math in grade six at Carnegie, something we should, we're going to be taking a look at and keeping a monitor. And as far as the junior high school is concerned, you know, since we've increased in all areas in grade seven and eight, we're still not where we like to be in these particular areas, so we're going to be seeking opportunities this year for continuing growth and continue working in these areas to, to provide better scores as we go along. I was really encouraged by the fact that we are increasing, you know, they have an upward trend, we have so for three years, and that's kind of where we are right now with our, with the raw data, and kind of what it's telling us.
But, but we still don't have state data to compare.
Right, we don't have the state data to compare to.
We still don't have the cohort data for a store, the level form.
Right, we don't have the demographic data yet.
So we're still working with very raw numbers. In fact, we got an email today, the student exam results should be out on Friday, April 14th.
Actually, I downloaded them this afternoon. I was getting some, I think they were in the, in the thing today, so I will download them like the second.
Next afternoon?
And I already started to cut those out. So hopefully I'll have some kind of numbers by, hopefully the end of the week, early next week, and then I can give some kind of issue of, like you do right here, what are they indicating right now?
And those two affect our school performance profile, which we should have October.
Yeah, it comes out in the middle of that. We did, we had the first, the phase of the, the performance profile that came out, so we had like a couple weeks, which we verified in different phases, so.
By having the raw data now, you'll have a rough idea within a few days.
Yeah, a rough idea.
Within a few days of what that looks like.
Right, so what they do is they send us this raw data file, it's everybody retested, okay? So most of them are going to be attributed to us, we may have a student who came in like in January, but we test them because they're in our building, I get the score for it, but they're not necessarily going to count for us when it's all said and done. So there will be some fluctuations in the number, but the last couple of years that I've done it this way, we were within one or two percentage points of, of what the actual things were. So it kind of gives us a good idea and a good jumpstart, you know, so we don't have to wait till October to get the real, the final score. We have a good idea right now where we want to go and how we want to do things, and we can present it to the faculty, and we get our meetings started sort of beginning of the year.
Between that data and between the PSSA data, I know in previous years, we've identified a couple of pockets that we thought we needed to put some attention to, we didn't, we didn't think was up to our standards.
Right.
And it sounds like we've had improvement in those areas, but the numbers still weren't up to where we'd like them to be.
Right, it's kind of where we always like, like, the pockets we, we worried about, like the middle school mathematics, middle school mathematics have increased both seventh and eighth grade, but again, it's just not where we'd like them to be, we still have a lot of work to do, we still have areas of the anchors and standards we need to untouch. And right now, I'm breaking data down for the individual anchors and standards that we have, and see where we can adjust to create and to spend more time on some of the things that we're weak on. You know, how can we get our students to, you know, give, give a little better score on our open-ended questions, or ELA, the, you know, evidence-based constructive response questions, how things are popping into my mind right now as I'm going, you know, through the data, that, you know, we might need to take a look at, and see how we can do a better performance on those kind of pockets.
I think the board's talked about this a couple of times, but I would imagine we would have an interest, or I personally would have an interest in looking at those pockets that we previously identified as being areas of need. We've seen improvement, that's fantastic. I know we've made some changes in the last year or two that we were hoping to affect change, and this was, this was a good outcome of our, our efforts. But digging into the data and having the data tell us, or us infer from the data, what is, what are the potential causes for these low scores, even down to the student level, at an anonymous student level? Are the low scores coming from kids who we would expect to have low testing scores? Or are there data that grades B level with their test scores or a D level? Or digging in, having the data tell us a story about what does this group look like? Why is this group performing low? And breaking it apart ten different ways to try to tell us something, but I think that's the beauty of the data, we can dig in and look and hypothesize what's happening and then prescribe a potential fix. I think it sounds like we've done that in the last year or two.
Right, and we're looking to do that.
And maybe we say, you know what, some of what we did worked, let's do more of it, or let's do something different, I don't know, I know we've had this same group for a couple of years now, it was low. And we've seen improvement, which is great, but it's not up to our standards. So what are we going to do? What gaps do we see that exist? Where are the scores deficient? Why do we think they're deficient, and what are we going to do to fix them? So that can be, any other comments in that area? But that's what I'd love to see for a future meeting for kids.
And do you currently look at class, like, plus grade ranges and compare it to the PSSA score?
Yes, I do. In the last, last couple of years, if you've looked at the data reports I provided to the board and then Dr. Piper, you know, I, I break it down not only by, by grade level, but I break it down by teacher.
Right, so you're looking at this section.
So yeah, you can see that the, the, the average test score of the students in that particular class versus the, the grade point average you're receiving in that class, and see if there's any kind of, like a disconnect between them. And, you know, we've, we've talked about those before, and they'll be, they'll be there again, but I mean...
What we'd be curious to see is if there's a particular topic that is common across all the kids that have been showing to be deficient in an area. Is there a particular subject or topics that are across all kids who are deficient? So is it something we're not teaching? Is it one of ten different things that could be happening? We'd love to hear that, if you'd like.
But I'll, but I'll provide you, without providing a word of passes, I, I give you a breakdown of every anchor standard by grade level.
That's great, but then what does that mean? And what are we going to do to...
And it's included in that report that I do give you, it also tells us what percentage of the points we're getting on that particular anchor standard, and how many of our students are proficient on that particular anchor standard. So for example, see if I take like geometry in, in, in eighth grade, and our kids, I know, there's twelve points on the test for geometry, our kids are scoring four point three percent, but only eighteen percent of our kids are actually deemed proficient on that particular anchor. That would tell us that there's something that we need to look at, and that again, as, as always, will be provided to you.
But then that, the next step is, once we identify why, why do we think that's the case, and we can drill down to each kid and say, we only have so many kids, is Johnny, do we really think Johnny doesn't know geometry, or is something else causing that?
So it's a root cause analysis, so if we're going to look at, you know, is there a tendency issue with some of these kids, or how many of these kids have been suspended, or what characteristics do they share in common that maybe we need to have extra scores for, whether it's school council score, school psychologist, or whatever. And I think working with faculty, you know, and they know the kids in a lot of cases better than certainly Ed or I do, you know, and they say, hey, this is going on, Gary's parents just went through a divorce, and they're being separated, and he's struggling with X-MOD. And I think that's why our student assistance program is integral to help the kids identify some of those needs and get them.
Any other questions? Moving on to the rest of the meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen Finance Committee meeting as presented, and the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen voting meeting as presented. Thank you for having a second.
Another comment? I don't know how you, what your process is, but on the third page of the twenty-sixth of June minutes, this is page seven, six, nine, eight, the second aisle on top, I, my suggestion would be that we identify participated in Church Mutual Region Workers' Compensation Program, or Workers' Compensation, you know what church you're purchasing.
Is that the one that has workers? Okay, I think we had workers' compensation out in the margin as we identified Mark, but not...
Oh, yeah, okay, I see, that's, okay, fine, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
Is that, okay.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion ayes. We have reports, executive session, I'll, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting, where we discussed contract, real estate, and that's it. All right, thank you. Administrative reports, Dr. Piper.
Thank you. One of the things I'm increasingly concerned about is what happens at midnight tonight with the state budget. The state, as you know, passed a revenue package, I believe, of thirty-three billion dollars for spending, but they don't have the revenue to commit for that. The concern is, without that short revenue stream, how's that going to affect our BEF, which Bill tells me we're one of seven schools who had our BEF, basic education funding, reduced this year by the state by a amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. Couple that with what we had reduced last year, that's almost a hundred thousand dollars less from the Commonwealth than we received in the past. That's not easy for us to absorb.
Are they, do they get a reason for that? Do they just pick...
Whatever.
It's the new formula that was adopted a couple of years ago.
But it wasn't like because you're declining enrollment, or because you've got less kids in free, or whatever it is. In fact, there's less money coming to us in federal programs this year because the Department of Ed has given less money to PE. So even though our numbers have gone up for kids in poverty, or free reduced lunch, we're not getting as much money for seventeen, eighteen, federal services as we received in previous year. So I, I am real concerned about that, and for the life of me, it seems, and I'm not being an accountant, backwards budgeting that you're putting a spending plan forward based on figures that maybe you'll get from online gambling, maybe you'll get from, you know, video game consoles, maybe you'll get from liquor sales, and, and it doesn't seem stable. So I'm going to be very interested to hear what comes out of what happens after midnight if there isn't a pass, and then how does that direct us? Again, we've been in good shape in the previous budget pass, through local taxes and a collection rate of about ninety-four percent. So I anticipate with two percent discount, get the taxes in for real estate, we'll continue to have a nice return on that. But I'm very curious to see what the heck's going to happen. There have been a lot of back and forth with the governor, with the legislature, on a hundred million dollars that he was setting aside for BEF, and then fifty million towards transportation that was going to be cut, but then they're going to restore that. You just got to see what's going to happen. If you don't have the revenue coming in, how are you going to be able to justify the spending plan? So there's one of those things that are in here, that again, will impact us directly in some manner or form. And I just want to make the board aware of that, as, as you know, because we've gotten updates and, you know, it's in a lot of different publications. The other law that I'm a little concerned about is coming forth, there's a couple of them, there's a proposal for transparency law, where they would put off collective bargaining agreements, not just public, prior to passing of that for so many weeks. But there's discussions from some of the legislators about having parents involved in negotiation process, having parents involved, in fact, in teacher evaluation process.
Aren't they involved in the fact, in the fact of their purpose?
Well, that's, that would, that would be my understanding, but I think they feel because it's tax dollars involved, that some public should more input and clauses, other than documents involving strategy from both sides for negotiation. But I, I just think that would cause a lot of problems down the road, should that pass. So these are some of the things that are being proposed in committee that are coming forth. I think Wolf has said he would veto transparency, but that's, that's going to come back again. And that will affect us in our negotiations with Act Ninety-Three, faculty, superintendent, custodians, whatever it is. And that should be something we anticipate should that become the law to land on. But that's out there right now coming forward.
That's what, Captain, twenty-one teachers.
Yeah, that's right. So I...
Or got out of committee.
Got out of committee. I, you know what, that, that's, I can't even imagine if I'd train that one involved, and I'm sure we've submitted people that, you know, are very conscientious gun owners in respect of Second Amendment rights, and are very responsible, but I would still be cautious of how that could evolve, you know, do we train everybody, does the school take that forth, does professional development, do we train target shooting, what does that look like? And then if you, if you have a situation like a stand your ground scenario...
Well, it's like the Liza Illinois, that, in the cops, that's why.
Yeah.
We have so much money, and we, it's great.
The situation, there were two guys with guns, and the police couldn't tell them that was going to back out of the gun. So my question would be the liability, because at the moment, you can't always tell who that was, that was back out of there.
But in Washington DC, our congressman was saved because somebody had it.
They were lucky, they, they were lucky and, and, and look, you know, functionally.
They shot, they're kids who are...
You and I are going to disagree on this. I am not for arming a school... So my question would be the liability, because at the moment, you can't always tell who that was going to be that out of the room.
But in Washington, D.C., our congressman was saved because somebody had it.
They were lucky, they, they were lucky and, and, and look, you know.
Here, we, you and I.
They shotguns, their kids were on.
You and I are going to disagree on this. I am not for armying a school, and we as a society, uh, we better, that's my personal opinion, that is my board's opinion, that is my school's opinion, it's my own personal opinion. You and I, you don't really disagree on this. But for me, having a school-aged child, it is unconscionable to have guns in schools or whatever. That's my own personal opinion, because in key of the moment, it is so difficult to tell, you're the good guy, which one is the bad guy, is that the other good guy with guns, or is that the bad guy with guns? We don't know in actuality.
Even aside from that, just the role of a teacher. As a professor, I'm not, I don't have little kids in my classroom, I have college age. I still, and I'm not like anti-gun. I, I have a long military family, but it's just, as a professor, I don't want to be worrying about a gun in my holster while I'm trying to teach about Freud. Like, it's really, it's, and we have school shootings in the university, but that's something that's really hard that I wouldn't want to put on the teacher when I'm concerned about the math curriculum, but I'm also saying, oh, did you do your target practicing this month? Did you get all your hours in? Is your permit there? Like, that's all different.
The good news is we won't have to worry about this because it's not presented to a show.
But it's the thing, but it is, but it is something that, that is of the moment that we, I think, in terms of the larger community and our society, at some point should have discussions like this in kind of, um, just, just to, to gauge committee, um, to feel about this.
And as we're doing tonight, we must have discussions on this.
Absolutely, and, and it's okay to just stand with.
And if, and if I, if I could segue from that into the School Resource Officer. So, uh, I, I did reach out to Robinson Township to inquire about the possibility of having a School Resource Officer for Carleton. Nothing concrete, but, uh, I'd like to see at least what level the cost, and, you know, how we would utilize it. I presented the board, uh, with a brief on, uh, School Resource Officers, their edification, and to go over what they do. They're not just the heavy that's there, uh, you know, with the night stick to restore order for kids. They serve a valuable purpose in the school. I gave you a table, I've been reaching out to a little superintendent's, uh, for districts. I, I think the stigma in years past, twenty years ago, is if a school had a police officer, it must be a pretty rough district. Must have a lot of gang activity, it must be a mark on the community, and, and in reality, that's, that's an antiquated concept and isn't the case. So just going down, uh, the schools, if I could just read off, uh, briefly. Avonworth has one School Resource Officer. Bethel Park is one School Resource Officer. Brentwood has one S R O, and, and they do that by having several S R Os cover one shift. So nobody's a full-time officer, but they rotate, so there's one guy there at all times. Cannon McMillan has three School Resource Officers. Shartiers Valley has three School Resource Officers. Clerton has a school security outfit. Cornell, at this time, does not have any, but Aaron Thomas, the superintendent, there's trying to get one. Elizabeth Ford has one School Resource Officer. Fort Cherry has one, Keystone Oaks. Montour has a school security outfit. Moon has a School Resource Officer. Mount Lebanon has three campus managers. Northgate has an S R O. Parkway has an S R O. Peters Township has an S R O. Plum has an S R O. Quaker Valley. South Allegheny has one full-time S R O, five part-time. South Fayette has one S R O. South Park has one S R O. Upper Sinclair has one school police chief, two S R Os, two security officers, and West Allegheny has one S R O.
S R Os don't necessarily have to be armed.
That's in, in the agreement that you develop with the old police force. Put that in. But I'd point out, you know, in our Commonwealth, Upper Sinclair's often been the number one school in Commonwealth for academic achievement. South Fayette is the number one school district in Commonwealth for academic achievement. Mount Lebanon, Quaker Valley, Deez Art, you know, you consider urban lighted schools that have incorporated these officers as part of the daily staff. So I think it's something for safety and security, and the edification of our students and community, I think it's worth looking into. So I did reach out to Chief Vitmire, I do a letter into, at least for the junior, senior high, with Robinson Township, with, um, Borough Manager Silkup, and he's going to discuss with their Borough Manager just to see what the cost will be. Because you're never going to know unless you get some concrete figures of what that will look like.
I'm sorry, you said Montour?
Robinson, yeah.
I'm curious if.
Yeah, Montour is the school security officer.
We had talked about the lack of investment, so having Robinson here. Does that need to be a starting point, that you talk to Robinson, or is there a potential to reach out to Crafton or Carnegie too, and see?
Well, I, if I look forward to it, I think the immediate needs of the junior, senior high basis of discipline we had this year, and the close of jurisdiction, yeah, Robinson would be the first person we reach out to, but certainly Carnegie and Crafton. But I think we're starting, because I've got closer relationships in some ways with Chief Kennedy and Chief Summ.
That's what I wondered, I was asking about the elementary schools, if we can have somebody from one of the communities, even though we are technically in Robinson, if that may feel about.
Sure, but I don't know if we can have a Carnegie policeman up here with, you know, if you have to do a citation, if you have to go to become magistrate, you know, I think jurisdiction-wise, you've got to reach out to Robinson.
I think Mike's point is that she's separating out the logistics of procedure and what has to happen to file a citation on an individual versus the nature of relationships that might exist with a community-based person. So the question should be, in your investigation, is the logistics of having jurisdiction in an area a showstopper? Or can you have a Carnegie or a Crafton or Roslin Farms police officer act as an S R O in whatever configuration that might look like, and still be effective with having some kind of arrangement with the Robinson Police or whatever? But I think you're concerned, and others have voiced the idea, Joe, you know, as well, having that personal relationship is valuable, so I wouldn't limit your, your investigation to just strictly Robinson relationships. Not that there's anything wrong with Robinson.
Yeah, no, it might be sort of more, um, Heather, my three cheese. It's even possible.
You mean, you could be very well right, if there's a citation, you may appear in office office.
Well, I had a week of investigations up here, and Detective Dugan's been up there. So for all things to take place up here, it's been a Robinson.
Sure, sure, again, but we're not just talking about cop, we're talking about some of these more, right, and other stuff as well.
Keep in mind, if, we end, I believe Roslin Farms is a certain spot.
That's right. Good point, George. Uh-huh. Uh, who's my report?
So on the topic of S R Os, I think there's been a wide variety of opinions about how to approach it. Do you have a timeframe for future discussions? Are you looking for more feedback, or are you going to go gather some more information?
Well, I, I need to get more information, so I'd like to get something a little more concrete from Robinson.
But if this is good to start the conversation and get people thinking about it, maybe in the community, obviously.
Sure. So. Silkup said he was going to meet with the township coming up in Bridge. So I wrote a little out.
And you had the building administrator.
Oh, and Mike's, Mike's been, and Rachel.
I guess I would play. Where are we in updating video cameras?
Well, Rachel's working on a grant for, for Safe Schools Grant, beginning of court for Brian from Vector. Vector has been, has provided with, um, equipment for cameras and the monitors and so forth. So we're applying for that grant, we have to August first to get that out.
Do you see a need at the elementary schools for?
I, I think the need would need to be here at the elementary, I certainly could see exterior cameras, maybe a camera in the entranceway to see who's coming to the office. So I think the exterior piece of cameras, but I think you need more cameras inside the high school.
To Leah's point there, I think we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and if we need help, um, reaching out to potential partners, integrated partners that do this professionally, or if Vector is, I don't know if we decide on one, or if we, you know, if we need to butt in RFP, or whatever the, the process is, but I thought we might have been further along at this point.
I thought we were going to have this for the second full school year.
That was the discussion back in May, I think.
We get word of the grant.
We, it's to be submitted by August fourth, Phil announced that you can maybe end of September, begin of October. So, and then what happens is then we put the money out, we pay for it, and they look at the federal reimburseings for it. Previous year, it's been twenty-five thousand, this year due to state budget, they put it down to twenty thousand.
Because of that calendar, I think it would be, um, that we could start on this process to put on, put in the beginning, and then hope we get that out. So we'll be in progress.
Right, I mean, I think this is something we need to be getting ready for.
Yeah, we have to.
I mean, with things that come on, we'll be able to.
Even if we have to pay a percent.
I don't think this is a, if we, it's a.
Yeah, we actually have to kind of decide.
Right. So it'd be nice to get the grant. Can we do it and still apply for the grant?
Actually, right?
Yeah, essentially, yes, you can. Um, right now, we're worried, working with Vector to get, they sent us a quote on Friday, so we're going back and forth to trying to get more specifics. They weren't, it wasn't itemized, and I need an itemized to be submitted to the state.
Can you do some help, partner?
Bye. Well, I'll tell my medicals, I'm eighty-five thousand, is what the ballpark was with everything. Um, and that would include, and I'm sketching right now, um, cameras in each corner of the building, upstairs, downstairs, so every hallway would be covered. That includes hard drive installation.
Monitors.
Monitors, I go with that. Um, upgrading the servers, and also to the tie-in that allows for real-time web-based access. So the principal would be able to access that as well as tie-in to the police, to freely access the police departments, should they need one.
Thank you for that. And do you mind, I was involved in the process many years ago, when we worked, when we had a couple of years with consultants, so maybe I can supplement, or just be a participant in this conversation, just to help share what we found a couple of years ago, so I'd look at, just maybe look at those, if there's any value.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm just having trouble remembering, the safety study that we just said to know ahead of, refresh my memory, are, was that, was that to help us figure out the camera situation, or was that a side?
My recollection is the safety study was a comprehensive safety review, of which cameras would be one component, but now that you said it.
We did pretty definitively.
I recall saying, we know we need camera, we know we need better cameras and more other.
Right.
So we're going to do that regardless, but let's go through with the, the comprehensive safety study, and then as we're having that, we'll fold in this camera piece and make sure that whatever they're recommending fits with what we're already.
When is that happening? Is that?
We, we had to set up a start date for that.
Okay, so I thought we told them, yes, go ahead, so we would want to be.
Do we have someone, big appoint person for that one?
The guy, the guy that was here was.
Internally, do we have a Carleton person? We have, I don't think it'd be Brian. We have a Carleton person that's going to.
I can ask Dennis, because he was working at, in Spenceville.
He's not a hack guy, but he would be involved in these.
My hardware.
Yeah.
Of course, Mike.
Potentially, I can participate.
Because, I don't know if you know, I said, Mike, should we, if there's a problem in the school, he has to leave his office and go to another room, and hopefully the key works to get into the computer room, just to be able to see what's happening.
It's an older system.
That's.
It's an older.
Go ahead.
So we're going to, you make sure that's started?
Yes.
Thank you for that. All right, um, I apologize, so that's the end of your report. Moving on to the finance section, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following two items. Number one, appoint William Riley as Board Secretary for a four-year term beginning July first, twenty seventeen, pursuant to Section four oh three of the school code. And number two, the appointment of Charis McKerns as tax collector for the Borough of Crafton, effective July first, twenty seventeen. Move by a second. Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Quick question, Bill, um, the tax collector issue with Anthony Carnegie is different from this, and then.
Yes, totally different. There was an employee there who was the point of tax money because they made him say that employee left him out of this, out of the area, and so they're taking another employee out. Totally different.
Thank you. Just so you know, we, we double.
I can't see it there, so.
So under Section two personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following seven items. Number one, addition to the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen athletics supplemental list as submitted. Number two, reassign Heather Eliano to the position of general food service worker at Carnegie Elementary, effective August eighteenth, twenty seventeen, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number three, reassign Sharon Stenelli to the position of elementary library aide at Crafton Elementary, effective August eighteenth, twenty seventeen, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number four, reassign Denise Cazina to the position of temporary one-to-one instructional aide at Carnegie Elementary, effective August eighteenth, twenty seventeen, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number five, award the position of lunchroom playground aide at Carnegie Elementary to Rita Whitecirk, effective August eighteenth, twenty seventeen, under the terms of the S C A Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number six, award the position of long-term substitute business teacher at the junior, senior high school to Elizabeth Speed, effective August sixteenth, twenty seventeen, under the terms of the C F T Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. And number seven, approve the leave of absence requested as submitted by employee number S C A one seven one eight dash zero one, the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. Do we have a motion for those seven items?
Seven.
So move by a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Section three, policy.
Can we go back really quickly to, section one, I think it's just a typo, under number two, next to it, it says full message of one second now. I think it looks like something was shot off. I'm sorry, back on finance, number two, in the margin.
No, I apologize. Sorry, Mike, I'm next there.
What are you saying?
So it shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
The comment is just. Thank you.
Right.
It's an incorrect, that's just a reference, I think, for search later, that's an incorrect reference, so. Good cap, thank you. Um, are both the policies, are we? Okay. So I'll have a motion, um, under policy for a single item, listed as number two on your agenda. Be, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second and final reading of policy number two zero four, attendance, as submitted. Do I have a motion for that single item?
Number.
Move by a second.
Second.
Move by a second, any discussion? Not in the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Um, I, I did have an amendment for the number one, should I just?
Do you want to email Dr. Plech, or is that a?
Yeah.
Just adding some things, correct, make a section.
Okay. He's inventing some other things as well, so it'll be a good, good time to update. Any director have old business they would like to discuss?
I'm wondering if we can get an update on the schedule.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Lafrer, the junior high school, we need, um, ninth grader, plus a don, uh, ten through twelve, they're getting some electives together, uh, but that's the electives are the things they're working on now. They are having a conflict with D P Spanish five, Navy history, because they're both singletons and are occurring at the same time. Uh, and that's, you know, maybe some kids may have to pick one or the other in the same place. Uh, when we get the Keystone exams back, we'll have an idea which kids go to the fundamentals, but that's where we're on schedule.
So are those electives holding up? You said junior high's done, are, are the electives holding up the junior high's too, or?
It's four, it's four, Mike told us, junior high's done. And I know Steph Porres has been in, and Scott Kane's been in, and they've got different times that they're here. Uh, so we email them and get back, they say what dates are in, stuff is in the day.
So the self-imposed deadline that we talked about, like the self-imposed target for completion for this was?[1779.83]
Well, way back last year, we, we had August fourth as a date, we were trying to get the master schedule done by June ninth, I think, as they like it, except for-
Right, so August fourth will be the time when we would send it in.
The kids, correct.
Do we have a estimated time that we would like to be done, so we can kind of do a double check and maybe print things out and have people do a manual check, or are we just gonna August fourth?
I'll ask Mike if he's got a, he's got a date before that.
The initial timeline says, um, July thirty, it's gonna be adjusted, so it's like the end of the year.
Okay.
Right, that would have lasted four months.
The board is anxiously waiting to schedule.
Uh, I'm aware of that and so will the principal.
Wonderful. Any other old business that you'd like to bring up?
Um, just curious, have we started anywhere on this space or where, because you were having to go?
Well, they gotta work out some logistics of where they're gonna store the books, tires gonna be disseminated. I think the first thing that we gotta take a look at too before they tear the carpet off is gonna be painting. So those types of things, so the painting, then the carpet, the materials have been ordered, so I could ask Lisa when those were coming in. Lisa wasn't able to come this evening with the carpet, hence this, while, but the idea is that this will open as a maker's space. And I want to thank, uh, Nibar and Jesse Shaw for donating, smiling trains for the train, composer, that would be up front. But the idea is this will open for the second semester.
Have we resolved some of the questions the board had asked last week just as far as space and books and, um, the grant is gonna be twelve grand or something?
Twelve dollars.
I doubt, if you tear up the carpet and paint the floor with like a concrete stain or epoxy or something, you'll spend twelve grand just on the floor.
I don't know, if they're gonna, if they're gonna reseal the concrete floor, whatever, I know that they're big on tearing up the carpet. I don't know if they're gonna paint the floor or anything like that, I never got painted or else.
What's the reason?
I think their idea is, you know, if you use a concrete floor with some of the materials at the tables that'll be in here, they're gonna be cleaner like that.
How about the, uh, if you're gonna walk in the place, it can survive in, sort of, or-
I addressed that last week. What is there other than area mode to solve, or for these to eliminate some of the sound we're totally busy and active, we're gonna just stations, it's gonna be, um, and so there's gonna be some acceptable level of noise that we're just gonna have to absorb. But what is the point that this is out of the station? And this is for, just to-
I don't know.
You're the head of the plane, you make that.
I didn't take a step forward, they all took a step back. I don't know anything about the victim.
I look so eager, so I just wanted to acknowledge you.
I'll, I'll email Mike and Wendy Meyer. You're reading, this is teacher. Just trying to get a-
And look, you know, I asked, I was about to go, I was about to go last five, so I don't know exactly what's not really on it, but, you know, one of the questions I had made, you know, if we're gonna tear up things, how can we make enough to create noise? It's gonna be pretty noisy to make a space. So it's more detailed. It's gotta be more of this area mode.
And from my perspective, there's a really fine line here between, this is a topic that on the one hand, the board shouldn't have any involvement in, this is a teacher-administrator-led initiative. On the other hand, this is, we're in a sacred space from an educational perspective, this is a library, and to transform it is exciting and, and energizing and invigorating, but it's also scary, we wanna make sure it's done properly. So there's this weird dynamic of, board doesn't wanna medley get involved, we wanna let, we wanna empower and encourage the teachers and the staff to do awesome stuff. But we wanna make sure they're thinking from all the major topics that are involved. So Karen, there's a jugman, if you can help us-
Absolutely.
And maybe more communication and more involvement and more people coming and making presentations and asking questions would be better and sure.
Well, I think their timeline is ambitious, so I was curious, like, how's it going to be?
Right. I was, Mike, the dressing room's up.
I mean, but some of the stuff to set up is once built in room. Stuff with stations, that's not gonna be once of installation, it's not, it's gonna be very quick, just us getting the foundation, just maybe a coin to pull the carpet, it's cold.
Yeah. So I, I personally didn't care if we're meeting in a closet or the cafeteria or the auditorium, but at some point, if this space changed, we will need to make-
I think, I think group collaboration centers would be first.
Medical. I agree, that's my bet.
So just a thought, we, it could be in here, just with a different configuration, just whatever. Any other old business, any director wanna bring up? Any other, any new business a director loves to bring up? If not, we'll turn to the audience. Any audience member have any new topics under open forum or old topics? No eager?
Ask me a question.
Board member with open forum question? Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose aye? We are adjourned.